And so, October fifteenth through seventeenth and Helena. Anybody wanting to go?
I just said we did go to the rooms ahead of time. If you cancel, that's fine. This is just one that trustees are invited to.
And it's during the week.
It's during end of the week. Always during the week. My guess is next year we'll rotate back to Billings.
Okay.
It tends to be like a three rotation between Billings, Helman, and Zula.
When was it in Billings last?
Two years ago. That's when I went.
It was?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm sure I think I just.
The only thing I would say about this one is like, we've got time to provide, but there's probably gonna be a fair amount of conversation about the deciding on study. So, which will be how our budgets are set for the next five years. So, it might be. Check the checklist.
Is everybody?
Let me.
Oh, sorry, I tried to skip it.
Are you guys, okay, so two things I said. That's number one, Mr. Captain, who visited and what does the finance committee want tonight, the week before? Your new budgets. The finance committee is Lisa, Rena, Stefan. Talk about why they're to review the pieces.
The week before our August eleventh, because we're not gonna have an August twenty-third meeting?
No.
Pretty sure.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure.
I'm gonna, I am gonna be prepared. I also don't have an auditor the week before the end of the year, so that would, I mean, that's what I was doing last year. So. A little bit better, but.
Sun's just not a Tuesday. That's all.
Like try to do the four?
Yeah, we're looking at the four possibly.
Okay.
If you'll be in town.
Really expect four now. That's what we're at.
Other than.
Yeah, yeah. We're always. So, so stay clear. I think. I don't know.
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Or. Five is gonna work. But, you know, if it were thirty.
Later.
August fourth at five thirty for the finance committee. And then, um, if we change this Sunday, I will be posting the budget meeting for August eleventh. That has to be posted in the newspaper.
Do you, would you let Rena know?
Yes.
Mr. Captain?
Uh, first off, the, um, after our last board meeting, we talked about. Somewhere there, we talked about Exxon and Rottis and different things. And so, I reached out, visited them, and they're in the process of selling all their property in Park County. And so, they will, um, as far as they, um, tax credit, they will own property going into next year. Um, so they will, so check them off.
If, if they sell. If they get sold, right?
The, it's, the, the gal was sounded, it just sounded like it was in the process, like it was already. Like final signing or kind of deal, so I'm like, I know. Um, so, again, that list of the top ten, so we'll check one off, whatever those other ones are. Whoever we need to talk to, just sooner or later talk to them, most sooner or later we have a chance of getting them to think about that going.
Did I give you the one-oh people?
Um, I have one-oh contacts.
Okay.
I'll get them. Well, I have the. That one, uh, so. Uh, there just says an F I I out there today, um, with a proposal for a rental agreement. Um, design, look at signing a long-term lease, um, with any of our land, uh, land boards, if you will. And so, to make sure that we got that out there and then they have to the twenty-first to bring them back to us or to give them to us. Um, so then we will most likely have, um, a board meeting to select if, if we, if there's something in there that we'd like. Simply looking at locking in three years. We reached out to, um, the school boards association, got a little legal opinion on it. They were like, yep. Second part of that is once we had an agreement, once we had property that we were willing to sign into agreement, then we have to sign in. Fourteen conditions, I'm John Smith, uh, to Mr. Wiki, um, and he was looking into that, and he was like. He was, maybe he just wanted to have a conversation with you, pretty positive about it. So, we'll wait and see, but hopefully putting our, putting our. Ourself in a spot where, A, we're not owning property, and B, we are locking in a better investor we can for income. So, that's out there online right now. It's also in the paper this week. It is essentially hung up at every location in town that has a loan report. Things on, um, and costing coffee at the way, you know, I lost coffee today, but I stopped there emails. So, I'll get there. Uh, graduate profile. The graduate profile, we, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about that. I put some information out about that. I will put some more information out. Give or take, um, oh, I mean, it, it'll take us a full year to really develop the graduate profile. Because we have to, you know, I'll compare it to the bond process, but we need to have lots of conversations and make sure we're hearing from lots of voices. We need to make sure we hear from students, but we also need to make sure we hear from students who are recent graduates in college or gone on to the workforce. Um, so trying to target them during Christmas break or, or those things. Them or, you know, getting some of our, not some of our, much of our, our business, uh, businesses in the community and parents and that as well. Teachers and all those pieces, um, to do the, the job we need to do. It, it just takes time. And so, working on that, um, setting those up and, uh, again, I think there'll be a lot of small conversations, not, hey, we're gonna have a hundred people. Um, so that's, uh, Jump Start. We, Jump Start's in its fourth week, three weeks ago. We've been averaging a little over ten. Um, kiddos, we call it like twenties, a little over ten per week, uh, which is good. That'll mix of teachers and. And, uh, kiddos are smiling and, and that makes me, the, the last thing I want my kid to do is come to school during summer in some way and then also be upset about it. Uh, we'll wait and see how that, that process, what it looks like at the beginning of the year, um, to see where the improvements we made and. Uh, Bar is success for all. So, it's looking, I mean, we'll, we'll have a P D committee meeting coming up. Um, but Bar will most likely be here the twenty-third and twenty-four of October. As we cannot, we have to start with them after our fall first because of the grant. So, that twenty-third is, that twenty-fourth is a half day, work day on our calendar. And so, the twenty-third will be, um, Bar will be specifically kind of at our seven to twelve, and so we're going to be just a couple months to work on some stuff situations. Get them in that. Success for all, um, Amy over at preschool and Mrs. Fry, we're still will be trained on the. The twenty-ninth and thirtieth of August. Um, they will be coming in to work with them, so we're only gonna, they will take off in preschool and kindergarten. Um, and then, um, we'll roll out through the rest of this, uh, at the end of the year. And that's, oh, the last piece of this, we, uh, we've been athletic, we'll talk about athletic, why didn't you hear your second? But we are, uh, so one of the things Brittany and I have been working on is figuring out how we can take electronic payments, do electronic payments without, um. Always having to be there kind of deal, like QR code and those kind of things. And so, uh, we have, we have a program that allows us to do that. A, a secure program that allows us to do that. It's connected through the, kind of warehouse or whatever, our bank account. But then, so we are working on building a raffle for a vehicle, um, for, uh, a nineteen seventy Monte Carlo. And, uh, the intent of that is, uh, not that I don't want anybody in Carter County to win. But we prefer the majority of those tickets are sold to everybody outside of Carter County. So, there will be, there will be a limit of five hundred tickets. We have in there that if for some reason something goes wrong, because it's electronic, we can reimburse the tickets without, because we never catch the money. And so, we're safe in the car blew up or something. Um, so I wanna make sure we have a safety net in there that, that will go from. Give or take next, not next week, till the end of September, or, um, if before that we sell. So, um.
Where's this car coming? Where's the car coming?
Uh, Aspen. So, um, we're gonna, we're gonna work through the process. We, you know, get you, you gotta, you gotta work through some things too, but the other piece of it is, you know, there, there's an opportunity, maybe. Maybe next year it's a, like, um, mini motorhome that, uh, that F C L A kids do the interior on. And, I mean, you getting, again, uh, truly trying to find a way that I don't have to have coaches or kids just continually harassing people. For, for like example, for this, uh, working with Aspen actually has been kind of a, a really nice piece to, like, he goes to. Deadwood Nights and all these car shows and all that. And so, you essentially set the car, whoever, getting a, a banner made that will have the information on it. And so, um, yes, it's always better to have somebody around to talk about it, but even if they're not. So, on a heat, classic car guy, I, I could win a classic car.
I trust everybody read all the department head reports. And we'll move, did you wanna add anything to yours, Brittany?
If you guys have questions.
And we'll move to. Uh, is there any public comment? Not on. Anything not on the agenda. Old business. Inter curricular.
So, we're missing, we're still waiting on a couple of those, um, that. Ms. David Cruz for journalism, um, we did not actually hire her for journalism last year. And so, she did all the journalism stuff, so that was oversight on our part stuff, like this, this week or twenty-five and twenty-six. Mr. Ford, um, is going to do honor society, uh, as Kendall Fittelman wants to do student council. Ms. Hamel is, um, she's excited about science looking at, since she has some kids that are involved and interested in some of that. Um, and so, one of our mentor teachers, this is right.
And that Ms. Hamel will be teacher as well, is that correct? Or is that a different position? That's just something good, right?
Though, yeah. And maybe Ms. Hamel.
Sorry, I read that as Ms. Hamel, science in the lead, so sorry.
Oh. I forgot about this, so. Real quick, before we roll in everything else. I think it's probably. Lisa Sam, Rena Stefan, Mike Dave, Phoebe, Mr. Captain, Brittany. I am a bit late in sending this. Thank you, but I appreciate the retirement party and the beautiful clock. It has been a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you again for all you do. Sincerely, Valerie. Yep, that works.
Works.
Is there any board discussion?
I have a question. On, okay, second page, the last thing we talked about junior high volleyball still was a vacant position. That's still correct.
We will, yes, it is.
So, is there a plan if you don't get someone?
We have to, um, we're waiting on, just see if other rooms have one, I have two.
Okay, so that would be on our office meeting? We might have to check this question. Okay, I was just wondering.
And, and on a random side note about that, I do, I'm gonna work with, um, Rodney to look at, especially our elementary, junior high. When we look at our coaching, we need to build that based on a number instead of based on. Because that elementary ends up, junior high is up with like a random, like you might have ten, you might have fifty. Um, and so, if we put some simple benchmarks in there, you know, okay, if there's fifteen, there's one coach. And we think more than fifteen up to thirty, there's two coaches. Over thirty, there's a third coach, I mean.
Yeah, that's been a discussion for a while, so that's the.
Just benchmark him, and we don't have to pay their worth.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. So, can that come back?
But it's possible. So, just for the upcoming sports in the next few months, vol, junior volleyball is only vacant one, right? Or we, okay.
I think.
Through the winter.
The winter, okay, okay.
That's the one that, there's a pile of girls that play volleyball, isn't there?
Can be.
It's hard, hard for one person to, to. Okay. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Public comment? Just gonna stare at you, Brandon. Any other board comment or discussion? Motion?
I move to hire the inter curricular positions as presented.
I second that motion.
Sam made, or Stefan made the motion to hire the inter curricular positions as presented. Sam, second the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Stefan made the motion to hire the inter curricular positions as presented. Sam, second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, oh, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Social media or streeting? Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Public comment? Any other board discussion or motion?
I will do through the first reading of policy one thousand nine F E.
Dave made the motion, Stefan made the motion to approve the first reading Pickering social media policy. Dave, second the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Stefan made the motion to approve the first reading of the Pickering social media policy. Dave, second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Substitute hires.
So, real quick, just on that list, you know, all subs and down there, they're all in new addition related, is the bottom one, uh, actually Thomas.
Any board discussion? Public comment? Public comment? There a motion?
I move to approve the substitute employee list for twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
I second that motion. Stefan made the motion to approve the substitute employee list for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Sam, second the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Stefan made the motion to approve the substitute employee list for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Sam, second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same, all those opposed, same sign.
Do I abstain?
Motion carries. Phoebe abstains. Chaperone list. I see a lot of you are missing from this list. A lot of you male figures on the board.
Oh, definitely not these.
Any discussion? Public comment? Public comment?
Is there enough people? The three of us have to abstain. That's all. We're missing Rena.
But you could vote on them all by yours.
So we can ask for a question.
Okay.
Cause.
Well, that'll be fine.
So, everybody but Sam, then everybody, you know.
But at least everybody but Phoebe.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we have to have three motions for this one.
And our guys have kind of dropped the ball for chaper, uh, chaperones.
At least we don't have to make five motions. Good job.
See, I did it on purpose.
I mean, there are six that you want, you could do, everybody but just one of you, and then you abstain and then just do, makes sense?
Yeah.
Gotcha. So, just exclude one of us.
Basically, you want to, three, four, both.
I move to approve the chaperone list as presented for twenty-five, twenty-six school year excluding. Sam Wright.
Oh.
I second that.
All right, Stefan made the motion to approve the chaperone list for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented, except for Sam Wright, Phoebe second the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Stand up for yourself, Olivia.
I like you.
Stefan made the motion to approve the chaperone list for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Phoebe second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Cause I'm gonna abstain, cause you and I have to abstain. So, should I second it? Or I'm gonna abstain?
No, you can't.
I can't second my own, myself.
Dave.
So, Dave, you have to second it.
Yeah, I'll second that then.
Let's try to send the second. I'm sorry, I was.
Yep. Phoebe received it or seconded, seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Phoebe and Lisa abstain. Motion carries.
I move to have Sam on the chaperone list.
I'll second the motion.
Can I second break up?
Nope. You messed up. Okay, Phoebe made the motion to approve Sam Wright, uh, on the chaperone list. Lisa seconded the motion. Is there any public comment? Comment? Board comment? Phoebe made the motion to approve Sam Wright on the chaperone list for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Lisa seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sam abstained. Transportation contract. Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Is there a motion or more discussion?
I'm going to approve the transportation contracts for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I second that.
Stefan made the motion to approve individual transportation contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Phoebe seconded the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Stefan made the motion to approve the individual transportation contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Phoebe seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Policy one thousand nine F E first reading.
I, I scribbled it off that one. It's not numbered. Yeah, it's not numbered.
You fixed that.
I did.
That's the same.
It is.
Social media.
I just put Pickering. Because M C S B has not numbered it yet, which it did say above administration.
Is there any discussion?
I have a few notes. Okay, so, on page two, the second bullet about may not substitute more than thirty-five consecutive days for the same teacher. Would there ever be a situation where maybe that would be beneficial?
Then you have to, you have to have a long-term contract.
Okay.
So, we're in statute, you're law.
Okay.
And so, and doesn't it have to be offered? I think benefits and some other things. So, it's smart. It's played on the terrorist, not as long as.
Okay.
Yep. If you've got a long-term contract, it's okay.
Thank you. And then, um, I was wondering if you could explain a little more about the loan repayment program, part of that.
So, um, well, there's, there's two, two mixes to this. So, we, first off, qualify, um, because we're kind of on school. Teachers can qualify, absolutely.
Okay.
As long as our program continues.
Okay.
That is, is part of that. Uh, and then. And that's the, 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 that's the biggest risk. We, um. Not in there, but you, you have to put it in, maybe if you are in a high. You needed a manager, could not find a manager. You could go down that path, but that's all that's, that's for the, the teachers that are coming out. That, um, because we're a low social economic area.
So, the state would be refunding?
Right, that it's not, it's a program.
That's nice.
And then they just sent us the word to verify it, so I happen to be working with children here, but I've not been, started one.
Okay.
I said it's all on the teacher's side.
But it is truly one of those things to not forget about. You're talking to, to the teachers, how many insurance. Because it. I mean, over the course of five years, it's plenty in their pocket. That covers their loans and, and I mean, yeah, it's, it's one of those things that sometimes you forget to talk about, so you share.
Any public comment? Public comment? Do you have any other discussion questions? Motion?
I move to approve the first reading of policy one zero zero nine F E.
Thivi made the motion to approve the first reading of one thousand nine F E. And Dave seconded motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Thivi made the motion to approve the first reading of one thousand nine F E for, uh, Dave seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Policy revisions.
So we might want to break both parts of that. Um, so that first one, also fourteen hundred, it sounds like a big topic conversation in, um, the beginning of the meeting that, um, we would like to move for meetings to Monday. So we just need to change that.
Second Monday of every month.
So does that work for everyone? Thivi?
So we, we needed to check with you.
I used to throw horseshoes around, might be in the summertime, but now it's, oh, that's our Wednesday.
Yep. So, yeah. So he, I think the last meeting. Where did we talk about this?
Kind of a special meeting.
Okay.
Last meeting, so I asked Thivi about it.
Right. And everybody else was good with Mondays, so. Do you want to do that separate?
It was, it was with you.
So every day, flexible. I'm sleeping in my office, huh? How fun can it be?
Do we want to do these on separate here?
Does it, do you guys, I feel like fourteen hundred and seventy-four hundred are probably pretty straightforward. Thirty-five, ten is going to take some inputs unless you guys. You can do it any way you want.
Okay. Well, does anybody have any discussion on any of the other policies?
Thirty-five, ten. Bottom of page one, that one has a picture. Part A.
Four A?
Yeah, four A. That policy is here. So that number five on that policy says, like, in the case of homeschool, so notify the county superintendent of schools of the county in which the homeschool was located in each school fiscal year of the students attendance at the school. Um, but they have to meet that in order to participate, from my understanding, in extracurricular. An extracurricular, what does it say? Has a requirement of students resident school district. Not the policy twenty dash five dash one one two. I think that's what was on the discussion. Do we want to add wording for unenrolled out of district students participation in extra intra-curricular activities? Like, I think we're held to these Montana policies.
So, these all just say extracurricular activities and isn't it intra-curricular that we're having trouble with?
In extra and intra-curricular.
But, where is that? Where does that say?
So bottom of page one, so participation in district extracurricular activities. Quotes policy twenty dash five dash one oh nine.
Right.
Just this handout. But then if you're, that's for non, what is it? Non-public school requirements for enrollment exemption. And then that would bring you to twenty dash five dash one one two for the activities part of it.
Well, doesn't, aren't these referring to just extracurricular?
They're all against athletics.
And we're, we're worried about the intra-curricular? Is that what, how do you say it? Were you in on that conversation, babe?
See, I think you're, yeah, she got, you have intra-curricular on four A. It's under the same standards for participation of those required at full-time pupils as in three A, three B, which means they have to be academically eligible.
Yep.
And for students enrolled, they create these people.
So where's the proposal of policy then?
For the.
We did, this is what we just talked about last time when we talked, yes. So it just depends on if we want.
Cause is there like a proposal of policy in here that like includes that? Did I miss that?
No, there isn't. I mean, they decide, I mean, we might be going to school right now, but looking at it. Because it's, it's unique.
Isn't extracurricular not just sports? Wouldn't that be like in a club?
No.
That's just, okay.
When I asked MTSB, they pretty much said that it's up to your district, that there's nothing
Okay.
in statute. I guess it, it wasn't MTSB, it was OPIA. I asked OPIA, they said there's nothing in statute.
So that's basically this discussion is deciding whether we want a wording in to say, yea, your name. And you in the department.
Correct.
So they're the whole student stuff.
But this isn't even addressing yet, cause it's intra-curricular and this is extracurricular.
Yeah.
You can add wording in there for, because there is wording on four A two. There is for intraclassic organization.
And that would cover FFA, FCCLA. I'm sorry, a little.
But would they still have to meet twenty dash five dash one one, is my question. They still don't have to meet that for that, cause that's quoting it, is why then I went to that policy, I guess, is why I referred to that. Which then goes to the, once you meet that, then you gotta meet the twenty dash five dash one one two.
I mean, all this says though is that you're notifying where you're located, that you are a homeschooler. Doesn't say you have to be in your district.
Yeah, I just said one one two does for extracurricular. Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's for the government and MTSB's rules are very
So, right.
Either are enrolled in your district or you have your out of district, but those kids are unenrolled or enrolled.
But would we be able to count them, uh, for A and B? No?
No.
We'll get started.
That's one thing you can't let go.
Okay.
So if you're gonna accept the student that's gonna do that then.
So then they'd be using our funds and things like that for this.
It would be the one sixteen that we get now.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
So it'd be just like tuition, that they want to come in and join our club, they have to pay your share?
Yes. That's the discussion, isn't it? That's something that you guys would want to create. It's a very rare case.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, maybe it'll change or, I mean, it'll seem more of it. And maybe the way toward, if you're gonna put a stipulation in there, is put it exactly the same stipulation, uh, as a homeschool. That it's a one sixteen. So the time that I remember, whatever one sixteenth actually is, we don't have to continue to look at it and say, if it was a hundred bucks, it was two hundred bucks, you know, you could change this up.
So approximately what is a one sixteenth right now?
Oh, approximately, it was two something. She said two, two sixty, is that what it was? Yeah, I know, I know what you're trying to be on. It's, we're just like one sixteen that we get per student. So it's, and it's gonna depend on grade. If they're, uh, five through eight, it's different than a ninth through twelve. Cause we get more for nine through twelve kids.
So OPIA really didn't have a lot to say.
No, she said you cannot count them. That was her one, you don't count them for the campus. We will not count them before them to the state.
So can they be enrolled without a policy? You don't think we're gonna have people complain that we have kids coming that are not paying, their parents aren't paying? And yet they're holding offices and stuff like that and getting to go on trips that hard kind of kids are not getting to do?
No. I, I think you will. I think you will.
Yes.
The only thing I would throw in there is, I mean, right now we're specifically talking about students in FFA. And FFA does a sizable amount of their own hundred. And so part of being in FFA, they're selling for, they're doing those things. So is this student taking part in those things? Yes. So, I mean, they're.
Because other than using buses, the school doesn't pay for anything. It's just the wear and tear.
But I think, I think.
What if you want your kids to be on the chicken judging team and they're on the chicken judging team?
No, I totally get it.
My kids are studying chicken judging and now they can't judge chickens.
And that's, the, the press is part of the money for the other, yeah, they're, damn it, it's one in a thousand case, you know, this happened, but if it happens again in a different club or a different club.
Yeah, where do you, no.
Where you, that's why it needs to either have a policy or not allowed or whatever.
I already draw the line, like, maybe it's one club right now, but then how do you say no and that, maybe those fundraising is different time. I mean, that is a, you know, so just a lot to think about, I guess.
That's why, if you, if we did put in policy to allow it, we would have to put something in there like, uh, one sixteen, just to.
So it's, it's not something we have to readdress all the time.
Right.
Saying across the board.
I mean, I guess one thing I would say, I, I think you'll probably see it as tied along more than you have in mind. Because technology makes it available. If they could be on, could live here, say they're fresh in software here, maybe parents are divorced, parents getting a job, something. And they moved just a little ways away to move to Baker. And now they can connect through Zoom, they can be all out, they can still participate. I mean, it, it's so much easier for them than if they've been part of the program, whatever that may be. I mean, I, I do think we better refer to it as we will see.
Cause I think you'll see it until a big school gets it and there's some things that will go before, while on policy will change. Cause I think there's a chance that like if you're a big school, see that it will change and somebody will put it through legislative into a bill. That's what I'm saying.
I was gonna say, would you be able to use wording that they have to be a part of the program before leaving the district to?
And that was the conversation we had last time, was that, you know, they were here previously.
They've been involved in it for years before they left.
You're not just joining it from Eureka.
You're not going, oh, Eureka has a great coverage program. I wanna, or FFA program, I wanna join that program, you know, so we can go to nationals.
Right.
I think that's a great area, cause you can live somewhere for a month and enroll and then.
Or I really feel like there are those instances where somebody's just in the Paver River County or just in the Fallon County and we're the closest. So, I don't know that you necessarily want to say you have to live here for a certain amount of time in our district.
I think you're just trying to avoid like all the way across the states.
Yeah, I get it.
I don't know, cause the kids that are present are gonna be contributing more, be involved more, you know?
Yeah.
Than somebody potentially that's not in our district. And how do you measure that? How do you measure, you know, I just don't know how you would do that for
Oh, sorry.
They're doing every day things potentially for that intra-curricular program.
Yes, I was trying to get away from like where extracurricular got us when the state gave us the laws. And it kicked our Fallon County kids that used to come to school here, are homeschooled now. And now they can't do anything because they live in a different district.
Yeah.
Cause they went.
They're on the law.
Cause they went homeschool and not homeschooled in the resident county, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yes, they live in a different county or different district, yeah.
Counties, so they don't qualify for.
To be able to play sports in our county, even though we're far closer. So it's just something to think about. Cause I, I always thought that was really unfortunate when the state did that. I get it in the big areas, but for our area, it's not realistic.
I would say that intra-curricular should follow with the same as extracurricular activities. Policies are being created. That's my thought on.
So then my question would be with a student were currently, then is that with that student, parent, father, or that student? I mean, where would we go with that student?
I'm not talking students physically, I'm talking as like a whole policy. I would imagine that you would have to meet that requirement every single year when you would enroll in that intra-curricular program.
I, yeah, I mean, I, that I'm saying, we're in this very moment, we're, we're faced with this. So we, we, if we follow the inter-curricular or with the extracurricular, then we're, we have to suit in that situation. So then are they immediately out of our program or are they, are we, how is it going to crack that?
I don't know. I'm just saying my thoughts on the policy, that's the most.
It's a good question, cause.
Well, I mean, I guess if we're gonna go, if that's, if that is the way we want to cope for, let's go. Then we can go and then we deal with the bridge, the next bridge, you know, we figure out how to deal with that. But if that's where we want to go with the, have the same as extracurricular, the policy's there.
So if we.
Figure out the next bridge.
If we don't create a policy, what happens?
We're in this random
Great.
living mode.
Okay.
I mean, back to the exam, probably not, I mean, somebody along the way will do well. Why are they participating?
My kid isn't getting to do that. We live here and.
The other thing too is right now, we're kind of discussing whether I would want to add something to this new policy. They can have the first reading and second reading, by the time that that policy got approved. Then, I mean, we're in the September, or, September.
Yeah.
Then what would it come into effect?
I don't know, you have to do first and second, cause it's just a change, it's just an amendment. You already, you already maintain the policy.
Okay, yeah, it's just.
So it'll just be whatever you guys choose, probably just. It goes into effect, you amend it though. Whatever changes you make goes into effect from the time of amendment.
Sure.
So long as it's probably.
You said you, yeah, you amended it now, it would go into effect now, so you have to deal with that situation tomorrow.
And, and with that, you could, I mean, we could state however the board would want to go with that. I, I think it'd be worthwhile to hear from the advisor. And, and whatnot that, I mean, we could pass the policy change, put that in and, um, grandfather's student for the course of the year, because they're already in the program or in all those things. And this, we could amend the policy or we could pass the policy and put it that it goes into effect July one next year.
But what if somebody else tries on that meantime?
And they're just continuing, uh, in fact.
Yeah, you would. And, and we may, we may, we I don't know, a bunch of people jumping in between now and through this year, but maybe, I, I don't, I mean, it's a turkey on there.
There's a blank one. So are we gonna require them to pay their sixteen to the A and B? And if we do that, can we have kids like from Baker come over and be in our sports program and pay one sixteen to the A and B?
No, cause that's state.
Could be FFA, so.
They can't be sports.
Cannot be sports.
No, so it'd be a resident in that county.
Or enrolled.
That school district, I should say.
Or enrolled.
Or enrolled.
Or they have the out of district testing area, which was approved by you guys. Or they have the added sugar test area, which was approved by you guys.
Any public comment? Public comment? Any other board discussion?
Do you have a policy? Are we moving on or?
Did you have promised me kind of something before?
Yeah, I did.
Good.
Okay, yeah, cause I think.
All right, so we four hundred is. Credit cards. So there's like limits lined out, not went from four thousand to ten. And twenty-five to seventy-five thousand.
She kinda explained that on the first.
Yeah, I read through that. I just think most of those situations could be brought ahead of time to the board. Is that what it's relating to, like approvals? Or how much can be used?
So it's not just like a single purchase, if that makes sense? Okay, yeah. So like the example, it was like when they go to the nationals.
Yeah.
They're gonna have all their fuel and their meals and their hotel and their, that's gonna be over four thousand dollars.
Sure.
We extend their limit when they travel.
Okay.
Um, so orders, like we are to order all, during the spring, a lot of brands and far on the credit card.
Yeah.
That's gonna be over the four thousand dollars. And so we track them or we can change those limits, I mean, instantaneously.
Yeah.
And so we change them when they go on long distances and then when they come back. So like most of our limits sit a hundred to five hundred dollars through the year.
Okay.
Unless they're going on big extended trips, which are. So.
But the proposal is to just change those.
The tens, I don't have to come with approvals every time. And then the seventy-five thousand, I don't know when this was done last, but it's been seventy-five thousand current for the school since I started over. And that was set by the credit card company in the system. So that was wrong.
I think we changed it.
I don't even know how we changed it.
Or maybe we didn't, maybe that was the limit for the.
You might change the limit for administrative board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
And that limit still sets up five thousand, so that we still can't go order five thousand dollar item, even though the credit card is ten, if that makes sense.
Okay.
That's still has to come to you guys.
That was great, second question about coming to the board.
Yes.
Okay.
Cause you gotta figure this is, that credit line has to last enough fifty days.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So you don't have to come to us every time in.
Just.
Okay, they're individual, that's, I mean, that's, that's definitely a county, that's kind of thing. To go to the commission again, never time to wait. Credit limit fees.
Like I said, we track it label and I, I do like the offer of the fact that if there's a fraudulent thing, they call right away. Um, there've been some websites, they'll call right away, we have to pre-approve for our transactions to go through. It's really tight. And so that's, I mean, that's a nice part of it. You call term office if famously a third boss or stolen or, so that's good for me.
I mean, truly, I mean, I guess the focus on this aligning what has already been been done with that whole policy.
Right.
So what we do every day isn't actually that the policy.
Oh, you like to give your hat today?
It's all right. No iPhone questions?
You have to.
Um, I move to update policy fourteen hundred to move our meetings to Mondays instead of Tuesdays. So the second Monday of each month, a regular board meeting.
I'll second the motion. Sam made the motion to update policy fourteen hundred to change our meeting time to the second Monday of each month. Instead of the second Tuesday. At least the second motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Sam made the motion to change policy fourteen hundred to the sec, having our meetings the second Monday of each month. Please second the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I move to update policy number seven four zero zero. With credit cards.
I'll say.
As recommended.
TB's made the motion to update policy fourteen, seventy-four hundred as presented, step in second motion. Public comment? Public comment? Board comment? TB made the motion to update seventy-four hundred as presented, stepping second the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And what to do about the other?
You hate to turn anybody away from our school. If they wanna be in our school, you want them here.
The easiest solution was Sam's solution, but it's also the hardest solution at the same time. But I don't know, I kind of. Not to like play favors or anything, but I kind of agree with Mr. Caffey a little bit on the grandfathering thing since it was allowed for half a year already. How the law expanded once, whatever. But it's like hard to say. No, no.
It would've been good if that would've been posted or.
So, I don't know, in my opinion, probably I'd have to lean towards Sam on the intracurricular, extracurricular running in the same lines. But yeah, the hard part is deciding whether or not to allow grandfather for a year until July or whenever.
I guess the, my only comment about that is, um, if we I like the simpleness of, of having it the same, but if we just go with this, the easy point of what, what's right for the kid. Did the kid do something wrong? Did the kid do something that changed their circumstances? Did the kid control any of the things that are part of this? Probably not. And so, um, if, if we're gonna do, do right by a kid. And have faith in our advisor that they're gonna hold them accountable for a year. Uh, because I asked that, I mean, th- this conversation started with sitting at that FFA banquet. Having a conversation, being like, oh, school, really, can I? How's this special? I hired an officer. I was like, what just happened here? Um, so at that point, um, I mean, I guess I feel like we, we are, our advisors responsible and. Yeah, I mean, I just think we, we come back to the point of, plus right by the kid, what kid controls, cause the kid didn't control any of these reasons.
I hate to turn the kid away if they're willing to come and make the effort. Like he said, it's not the kid's fault and they're still friends and wanna be here. But then again, it's not fair either, so I have no idea. I have no solution. I got nothing. I don't know if he's still there.
Right, he's still there.
In this couple.
I don't think it's right to kick the kid out when they started off living here and in the middle of it, had to move and yeah, as far as that part that goes. So. I think whatever way, this kid should be grandfathered and we need to decide before another kid comes. Wanted to go forward.
So they grandfather him for just one more year or the grandfather didn't tell him to graduate or?
Come on, baby.
That's a legitimate question.
Yeah.
No, I mean, like I was saying, if and it, it's especially hard in this case because it was allowed already, like. Yeah. So I agree, it's really like, it wouldn't be fair to kick him out because we allowed him to stay already after he moved. And then going forward, our policy should be a little more black and white, some of those questions.
Is there FFA in the county which they live in? Is there FFA in the county they live in?
Do you wanna chat to that? Some wording?
Sure.
Do you represent?
Chat.
I, when does the beginning of FFA start again? Did it already?
The elected officers, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was what Mr. Caffey said, right?
Okay.
You're an officer, that's not.
Yeah, I don't know, the only thing is, does it go to public right now? I don't know, that student is. I, I don't know.
Slap or rape? Same as Olivia, right? I guess we're not saying.
I don't know if we're gonna be able to make a decision on this one tonight. I don't know. What is, does anybody get?
Just wanna see what the AI comes up with.
Do, I think it should be ran through someone above us who are working. Before it's actually adopted, is my thought. And what we can.
Intriguing though, because like I was pointing at, I mean, and I tried, again, we kind of push everything that, and this behavior, they're kind of all like. We don't, yeah, it's gonna figure it out.
Nobody wants to touch it.
Yeah.
Cause like eventually it will turn into code, so something's gonna change.
Thank you.
It's gonna go legislative.
I'm just kind of like, we create a policy, maybe we must follow that policy.
So this, the proposed edition, which that GPT says, um, it creates its own six. So it adds to the policy that says for purposes of consistency, equity, students participate in intracurricular activities. Those tied to academic courses and career participations shall be subject to the same behavior and academic eligibility standards as those participating in extracurriculars defined in section three. Intra curricular activities include, we're not limited to, they're all listed out in the student, school's sponsored events linked to course credit or class requirements. C states that students enrolled and participate in effective intracurricular programs prior to the adoption of this provision shall be permitted to continue participation under the prior rules through their anticipated graduation date. Provided they remain, continue to enroll in the district and maintain appropriate academic standards. So that part has to be reported, but prior to this adoption, this provision shall be permitted to continue participation.
I don't know the goal to, to graduate.
I just, I was just trying to get.
I would. I would agree, I don't think it's fair to just include somebody that thought they were enrolled in something. I don't think that's fair.
You would say until the next election of.
Yeah.
Or through state convention, state conventions and.
But then you're just making it for one. You have to make this for all intracurricular activities.
That's what I'm saying.
But any current, put the policy in here and say their season. Any current, like this season, current participation in any inter curricular activities that doesn't need these required. Kids.
I think that's kind of, and that's not recorded. It says students enrolled and participate in effective programs prior to the adoption of this provision. And they're the only ones that can, that are in it right now.
And then you have to prove, and then you take out the.
And then through whatever you guys decide, through state convention or, and whatever ended here.
And then follow extracurricular.
And then the first two A and B state that call extracurricular. Which means that you would, they'd have to be enrolled in district or.
Homeschool.
Right, to homeschool in district.
No, I did, I like the first half, it's just a little.
It's married it, yeah, married them together. It's a good, that's what you guys want for an end date, if that's what you wanna do.
When, well, like nationals is the last thing for FC CLA, which just happened.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Nationals prep, I think, is in October.
Well, that's what I thought.
So would you just say through nationals of.
The state convention, that's somewhere. They're just backwards.
I would think you would follow a school year.
I would say, I'd go to that.
I would follow a school year, then you're just covering, it's just a base.
Oh.
Through the energy.
I mean, that kind of is of the school year.
Make sure that they're aware that they should be an officer again.
Or.
Or on Texas, right. This will be.
And this gives them the opportunity to implement a program of applications.
Yeah, well, and then now it's, it's straightforward, like finish the season out and then, and if you're diehard, then so are we gonna move that.
So are you gonna make them pay this one sixteen?
I would say, yeah.
Mm-hmm, I would.
Say there'd be a tuition. If it's a one sixteen.
So.
So can we put all that in and make a motion tonight? Or do we, do we want it to be read?
I would do.
She would, yes, I would say it would be read by it.
I don't even, they might not even give us feedback.
But if we can put it in that policy, then we can vote on it in August.
Yes.
Or do we have to have a special meeting for all of them?
Or, yeah.
Or other highs, potential other highs.
Bring it back to our next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I move to add the wording that the chat GPT gave us with some changes to the policy.
To be approved. To be approved. Why are we, why are, are you wanting this done right now, like something, or do you want to table the policy to for words to be added and reviewed or x, y, okay. All, all right.
I wrote the table.
Table policy.
Policy thirty-five ten to add wording for.
Add wording to be reviewed. Yes, add wording in the first, in the third floor.
I'll second that. Oh, yeah, I like this hard. Stefan made the motion to table policy thirty-five ten to add wording and to be reviewed and to be brought back to our next board meeting. TB second motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Stefan made the motion to table policy thirty-five ten to add wording to have it be reviewed and to bring it back to our next board meeting. TB second motion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Legislative policy updates.
Someone just put big options.
Are these all required?
They're all required. They're all required.
Okay.
I move to approve the, I guess, I guess, is there?
Question.
No.
Is there any brain discussion?
Um, I would like to tell you guys while we're looking at these though, you, you'll have new formats for policies. So the new, what you see now is recently, which is what we pay for through the HSD and they have their policy services. It's really great because I can go into their program and I can edit them in there. And then when you guys approve, I click accept changes and it does, it does it all for me.
Oh, that's nice.
It's taking hours of policy changes, explicit and legislative years. So, but this is their program format. And so that's why it looks different.
I, I already said it, let's get some.
Oh, yeah, okay. Page two of policy four nine. I'm sorry, you're just losing the tea in the board of trustees. Thank you. You're welcome.
The.
Wow.
That's all your comments you got? Oh, sorry.
Yes, it is. Thank you for asking.
I think I crossed that out anyway, right?
And I have some.
Sam, I really appreciate your diligence with policies. I really do. I appreciate it.
Especially now that, so before we said that, if it's being named, it's current and for me, that's what I would do it. So it was like, and I said it, I is.
We have to have somebody.
Yes.
So I really, I'm gonna need like if I miss something, it's all.
That's all I had noticed.
Use the other editor.
Is there any public comment? Public comment? Is there any other discussion, motion? I move to approve the policies as presented. CB made the motion to approve the policy revisions as presented for the twenty-five legislative session following. Dave second the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? CB made the motion to approve the policy revisions. Dave second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those post same sign? Motion carries. Legislative. Huh?
Climate survey.
Yes, sorry. Climate survey. What's your goal?
I missed the work session.
Oh, yeah.
We really just got a chance to.
Summarizing the work session, they talked about, I, in the minute, I thought they thought they suggested changes and priorities from next three to five years from poll surveys. They talked about them in detail. Not to talk about any goals, goals, and just talk about the details of each one. In this, in the surveys, there is a big bunch of changes and priorities.
Yeah.
Those were discussed in detail as well. I wish you kept to talk about how you would track each of them or ways to track them or to see change or no change.
Or, or to set goals based off of, you know, what came back. I think we we should just follow the priorities for improvement. A lot of them like align with each other. And then figure out how we're gonna meet those. We can reward them maybe.
Yeah.
You're not supposed to score, but that was my thought on it. Like, our goals are kind of right there. I mean, they're telling us what they need. That should become our goal to meet those needs.
I'd agree.
Since it's already summarized.
The, the only thing I would add to that, so that's the priorities for three to five years.
Mm-hmm.
I would, he chases many rabbits, catches none. So, um, I would say out of those nine priorities, you would want to pick two, three.
Yeah.
And say, this is where we're targeting the one, this is the next couple we're targeting. No, these are into year two, year three, cause otherwise, again, you're gonna be all over.
Yeah.
I feel like.
Well, is this a, well, a lot of them are like the same. Well, cause we've got our goal. But I think, um.
One and one.
Yeah, like accountability and academic aligns with acad- academic performance and curriculum. You know, like they kind of all go together.
And I've only, as far as bar goes, I've only listened to the things that you've sent us, but doesn't that fall into bar, like as far as building those relationships and therefore out of that kids are accountable and want to be and.
Well, it's a bit with curriculum. You read curriculum will come with, you want them to be trained. Well, and like staffing, recruiting and retaining healthy teachers and hands-on teacher morale, fostering a positive school climate. Aligns with retaining your qualified teachers and providing better support for staff. So that's like all in one. That's like one goal.
What are the two you wanna tackle this year?
I think both of those two seem to be ones that we heard a lot of in the surveys as far as between your students and your teachers as far as.
So line one and one, make that the one goal and three, three, that's our second goal.
Well, and then extending hands-on learning opportunities, I think goes with one. I've already talked about how that potentially is going to start this coming year. It started last year, but to continue.
That could be part of the, the goal one with improving academic performance and enhance student accountability and academic standards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need one big goal and then how you're gonna meet that.
Let me explain hand on learning and opportunities. It's kind of how, or like that's one of the bullets that you use up here. How to improve the learning.
I, the only, the thing I would add in here is the board did a lot of work, fun discussing. And I, I think we have a fair understanding of our graduate profile. And, um, that, that not encompasses a couple of these pieces, but I think really developing that, um, fits into, okay, student standards and accountability, all of these pieces. Cause what do we expect? I mean, as we, as we discussed, what, what does a graduate, what can they do? And so I, I think that has to be like a piece of our goal as the, within, by the end of the year, we have our graduate profile built, because that's gonna give us an anchor across, you know, by how we're teaching our curriculum, how, how, you know, what kids are expected to know, what kids are expected to do. Um, and because our community and staff, and by that, then you have a chance to kind of put all the pieces together.
So I chat GPT did, tell me if this is too many, too many pieces into one.
Thank you.
I, I feel like it took all of them, so.
Like you just call and chat.
So this won't be too many. So the district is committed to improving academic performance by strengthening curriculum, increasing hands-on learning opportunities and enhancing student accountability. While upholding rigorous academic standards and intentionally building the graduate profile to ensure all students are prepared for success beyond high school. It is a goal statement.
This is beautiful. I don't like it.
It's more fuzzy, don't it? It's a pretty lengthy goal. I mean, like, it needs everything we were wanting, so.
You can pick the pieces.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So is that, is that a good one goal from here?
Yeah.
If you want to, or is that, is that maybe one, that's why I'm asking.
That's a, that's a good one.
I think.
He doesn't encompass the whole.
But can we set a second goal? You can set how many million goals.
Don't tell me that. Don't tell me that.
No, I, but you know, I mean.
I have a whole list.
And then we'll be like, oh, there's stuff, but.
Well, I mean, I just gotta look at it as a manager standpoint though, like
Thank you, Stefan.
You, you can set a million goals, but then people are gonna be disappointed because they only reached one or two of them. So like do it.
Yeah.
One or two attainable goals.
Okay.
Even if they are a little lumpy, like that first one.
Even if they're not attainable.
It's a little lumpy, it's up to push for, and it's measurable, yeah.
Yeah. You ready, you ready for goal number two?
Oh, we have another one?
No. Okay.
Yeah, I wanna hear it.
I feel like, I feel like this one's.
I wanna hear it.
I wanna hear it.
Because I feel like this one's your one you're already doing and you've done a really good job. The district is dedicated to recruiting, developing and retaining highly qualified and diverse staff by fostering a supportive professional environment, offering competitive compensation benefits and investing ongoing professional growth to ensure student success and organizational excellence. I feel like we got through ID, we can already on that step. You have core success for all coming in. I mean, it's like, that's a goal you, you already have because of the monitoring and everything that's encompassing. Am I wrong?
Oh, no, I, I don't disagree with you, but it's like.
Is that a goal? I mean, are.
It's like knowing what you got for Christmas before you got it for Christmas. If we're already doing it.
Then what's the point of having it?
I mean, then it's, now we're just saying it. I mean, I appreciate what you're.
I mean, but you're, you're continuing it.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, nobody as far as the PD stuff and the staff training, the staff appreciation, that kind of thing, that's all coming. And I don't know, it's just saying like it's gonna happen. I don't know, but it get what you, Christmas and.
I get that too. But it's also the motivation to keep working on that and towards it and improving it because now it is a goal. Before it was maybe a goal you had, and then now it's like it's a goal for everybody. Everybody knows the goal. Everybody can work towards that goal.
And you gotta know where your goal is. So if you're, just bear with me on this, our meeting isn't long enough yet.
No.
So there was this one Christmas that I asked my dad for a weight bench and my dad was very, I see some similarities here. My dad was very literal sometimes. I was like, I really want a weight bench, I really want a weight bench. So I just happened to look, look out over there, go, I look out, I'm like. I was dying, go to sleep, I like, I'm, I'm gonna become a Hogan, you know, it's gonna be awesome. Get up, go upstairs for Christmas and there's a weight bench. I'm so damn excited.
No way.
That's it. That's it. Just do the bench. No bar, no weights. Just the weight bench. And I was like and my dad was like, just ask for a weight bench. You're right, you're right. I did ask for a weight. So, yeah, I'm good. But the other piece of this in particular, I want on here is I think we want to just simply establish that we will follow up with a climate survey. Oh, then, whenever, February, we'll follow up with a, a climate survey where you get in the habit of giving a climate survey this time every single year. And not me.
And.
And not me.
Not me.
Can we check in on our goals? Like, can we put it on like maybe the report section? It would just be nice, like three months into, say this, every three months even, like, how are we meeting these goals? Like, what do we need to do even as trustees to support that or, you know?
For sure.
I think it would be good to
Uh, that in your motion, so then, that's.
Be reminded, be reminded of what our, our goals are and how we're, are we needed, are we not joining, if we're working on something in the next three months, how we reach those and it.
And then making that very, I mean, there's all, I mean, whether it's happy or quarterly involving the teachers especially, and we, teachers slash community involved in that and, and students saying, okay, these were our two goals. We're, we're using that.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're like, well, this has been the other person, which one should this be? Whatever I do, but give them a voice in that process. Again, incentive giving.
Do you think that
Two, two goals.
Do you think that it would be beneficial to do to put that same survey out twice in a school year? Or just once a school year? Like October and February.
Like the middle of the school year?
I, I, I would break it. I would not. Personally, I would go without, I would go rating. Just boom, how are we doing on this? How are we doing on this? And get that in general, um, and then we'll get to the end. Go with the open mic, I guess, and, and get all the full comments. So are we working on this? Okay, because then that gives us an opportunity, gives me an opportunity, gives us all an opportunity to say, go back to the staff and compartments or groups and say, okay, what, this is coming back. Am I working on it? How, how do we improve this?
Right, but I mean, do you
What time of the year do you?
Do you want, that's what I've been saying is like, do you want people to do that a couple of times a year? So that we can not just go a whole year without.
Oh, not, I wouldn't go with the full. I would definitely adjust the climate survey with solutions, but
Right.
But the, like
That's.
A pre-race, yes. I think it's worthwhile to have, here's.
Do you wanna set those dates now? Those that we have to say like.
Like every six months?
One going out in November, it's going out in March or I don't want a good timeframe. It's just.
That's what I was, that's what I was wanting, like October and February or.
Well, if we're looking at every, you say three months sometime in between, who did every six?
And do.
It's not quite six, but maybe your school year's only ten. So you probably wanna do.
So you don't wanna do it in the summer.
Yeah, we don't have anybody to push out, so families in summer, except for mine. That's, I mean, if you keep it during the school year, that's the best.
Yeah. Okay. So I guess that's what I'd like to see. So October and February.
And you're saying October is more.
October, March. Chat.
And November and March. I would say May. Just because this whole year is just gonna get started.
Yeah.
Like that's, I think.
I was literally saying, I don't care. I was just trying to like space.
I just think we need a little bit of time, this whole year.
But, yes.
Cause. Oh, yeah.
Do what's up.
Oh, yeah. Well, spring's always busy because we're doing handbooks.
February probably.
So February is, I mean, the best.
Um, and then that's something that Stefan and I could, we could sit down and tweak that survey to be more. Okay. Do we have any mentions? Did I not do?
I guess one of the, if you send this survey in February, you're not gonna review till March anyways.
True. So October you're reviewing, November.
So, I mean, just think of that, like, you're not gonna get, we aren't gonna get, it's in the board, that month, we're waiting out.
Could do it.
Separate. And then, or still want, are you wanting February for March or you want March for either?
Yes.
Okay. March, then that one's gonna be.
Yes.
I mean, I would either one is probably February or March is fine. It's one group. I mean, March is if you, if you put it out beginning, but in the February, beginning of March.
I'd say February is your better option for less busyness and agricultural people. Did I public comment this? Public comment? Public comment? Is there any other discussion or motion?
I move to approve the goals set during the discussion.
And timeline for surveys.
And timeline for the climate surveys.
Stefan made a motion to approve the goals set and, uh, timeline for surveys for October and February. Dave seconded the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Stefan made the motion to approve the goals. And the timeline for surveys for October and February. Dave seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those close, same sign. Motion carries. Athletic budget.
Um, just a quick update for you guys, um, big part of that is the autumn, autumn summer. So we wanted to wait till we got through track and got through all pieces, just a, a, a really good breakdown of what the cost is to run athletic program. And so, I think about seventy thousand for travel and referees, uh, all those pieces, but the, the good news is we ended with, um, thirty thousand dollars. So, um, that puts us in a good spot, as, as we discussed before, continuing working for, uh, a self-sustaining.
What was miscellaneous?
That's what I was wondering as well, miscellaneous revenue, and then what would be included in, like, miscellaneous expenses is that? Jerseys and things like that, or?
We actually paid for jerseys, so.
And you bought track outfits? Did we buy something for the hall?
Yes, they got new, uh, no, they got new, these are the hits, little roll things.
Oh.
Tackle, whatever they're called, tackle wheels, whatever tackle wheels. Sorry, football is obviously not mine. Hold the gear.
Um.
I can tell you exactly what you need to do for some of this.
And then we had discussed last year when we took meals out of the, you know, handbook that we weren't doing meals, about keeping track of that and seeing how many meals we still had to buy. Do you have that number?
Uh, we could tell you what it, what we thought it would have been. Is that what you're asking me?
No, we were gonna keep track of, um, you know, because if an athlete's, they didn't bring money, we don't have them not eating it.
Oh, that I don't know.
And so, we were gonna try to keep that sort of special master, see if we could keep track of that, and if we're not, you know what I mean, like, not doing meals, or?
I don't think food on the bus was an issue.
Okay, that's, I guess, it was a question, okay.
It seemed like they came home with more food.
Okay.
Just because the fridge was always full, the thing was always full.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they tried to.
Then, I know, then a question was, I thought, just checking.
Cause that, what was that, twelve thousand a year?
It was. Yeah, it was around that.
I did a spreadsheet for Carolini this spring that was, um, I just took the numbers and how many trips they were out of town, and I took, and gave that numbers for what it would have cost us if we would have done meals this year. I can share that with you. Yeah, I'm sure, please, okay. Well, this is lowing, um, so this is all moving to the fun side, as you guys know. A question I have for you guys is, is what you want to see broke out? Um, my plan was to still break out fundraising, gate and activity fees for sure, those three, and have, like, fundraising or donations. And then, um, I'm gonna have supplies, travel, and referees, and having, like, awards and ads under supplies. So is there more than those three revenues or three expenses you wanna see?
I mean, I like how you have it broken up now. I think that was.
I just have to build codes for all of them.
You do, okay. So the miscellaneous, could that have come from doing concessions? Cause I know there was some groups that did concessions, Captain.
No, because those aren't revenues.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm gonna, so, of all the expenses.
Oh, I know. What is that?
No, there's no kind of, no, referees, hold on, I'm going. Um. Okay, so miscellaneous was, like, classic cactus for the flowers, B and B subjects for the corner bodies, universal awards. Uh, Red Rock was, must have been supplies, like, we do all the books, spray paint for the fields, the recognition of the helmets, Sacred Heart School, that should have been under registration. Huddle.
Huddle, yeah, huddle.
So huddle is eight thousand dollars, I think, right?
It's fifty-seven fifty.
Fifty-seven fifty.
It's nice to think of.
Okay, a lot of these were, should have under-registered, so there's like one, two, three, four, five that should have under-registered.
Under-registered, what, was, when this all was started?
Okay, that was right, that was just expenses. So the revenue, well, no, I left out the one for the fire revenue, because that was an in and out. Remember we did the fire fundraiser?
Yeah.
There was fundraising, gate, the miscellaneous revenue, that doesn't show, that's fun. I love reports sometimes. Seventy-seven hundred, a thousand, must have been the fundraiser. No, because the fundraiser's up here, fundraiser is these ones. So, we'll go differently. Um, I, anyways, back to, hold this, this a little bit again. I don't mind building all these, just know that with every one of these, I have to build fifteen codes. So every fundraising, I have to build fifteen of them. Athletics, S E C, like, F F A, National Association. So that's why I'm asking, how many codes do you still want to see broke out? Cause I'll have to build it for every, unless you just want it for athletics, and the rest of them you guys don't care for, then it doesn't matter, but, yeah, I have to build a code for every sport now that they're on my side of them.
Do you have, like, a breakdown spreadsheet though, where you know?
Do I?
Like, if we ask you?
Like, if it would ask, you know, because I do buy codes in here. I'd let the system do it for me. Which is fine, it just takes me work right now, as we get ready to code stuff. So I'd rather do it now. I'd rather know now, because I can't go, to go back and fix it later is way more work.
I think codes, I know it's not, maybe for the next year.
It'd be easier, like I said.
You're just with the feedback, with people wanting to know the breakdown. I think that would be good. That's just my.
Yeah. More transparency, right? More work for Brittany.
Like I said, I would rather get it set up right the first time, because I'm still dealing with stuff that I've learned over the years, because I think we're just on an older part of the program, and, uh, so it's not working for us the way that it should, and so I'm trying to fix it, but it just takes some time. What is this one? Okay, so some of what went into, um, miscellaneous was the sponsoring of the nights. So they sponsored the ticket sales to Grand Angus, Dom Memorial, Eglac Grophy.
So I could have put it in.
It should have probably ended fundraiser, but it got put in miscellaneous. So we get sponsors into miscellaneous.
And to answer our question, I haven't asked yet, we are not gonna have sponsors of attendance in the game next year. We're gonna have sponsors, but they're not going to sponsor every attendance, because if it's in the battle list, then the fallout list will, if I, and I could be that. Um, and indirectly, we, you know, it benefited, it, I mean, it benefited a lot of our people, it, it benefited away teams.
Right.
So, we're gonna, we've done a setup to have the sponsors provide and do different things, but it won't really provide everything.
Um, the other one's in miscellaneous is divisional profit. So we get profits, we get some reimbursement from divisional districts. It's all a spreadsheet formula based, but yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Say, public comment? Public comment?
We have the board discussion. Are we onto it, sorry?
Oh, oh, that was informational, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Consent agenda.
I have a question, just for my information about the minutes. So I was going back through, because I had missed some, I missed, like, June meeting, and yes, if I have my agenda out, then I know a motion was linked to that.
Yep.
Should that stuff be in the minutes, where, like, yes, you put the motion was approved, say, the bus route drivers as presented, but they're not listed? So it doesn't have in there actually who you were approving? Should that info still be included in the minutes?
I'll need to go copy, now that it's linked in there instead of.
Cause it's, it's very basic, which the action, I think, is fine, so it's probably what the motions were, but it's missing all the details. Yes, mhm. So I had just had a hard time.
Well, that's what you need to do.
Okay.
I just didn't think about it, but.
Yeah, you don't think about it the same when you're there, and then it's after.
Yeah, and then, like, the job description, if there was any, like, say, additions, as a motion was approved with the additions, I don't have.
You're having it in there.
That's not in there, yeah, so it don't book, like, files, like, that could be an attachment to the minutes, and like, attachment A or something like that.
Right.
So you know what happened at that meeting.
See, in the electronic, when you do business, it's attached, but it doesn't make any sense up as a video.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so you know, starting to go back to athletics, so before track season, what I've given Carolini was seventy-eight hundred dollars. That was without junior high and high school track. So just, it was just that I have seventy-eight hundred dollars for meals. So if you want me to figure out track again, that's. And did you guys get married care of the activity bus that emailed you?
Yes. Where's that at?
Take that email to you guys.
Or you, you just, it's just not on the box, right? Where do you want, just put that after consent agenda?
Yeah, this is our, and the consent agenda, so it's part of it. My Branson's here, she has questions. We just want her to kind of get it approved, so like.
What, what is?
Can you put the link, Branson? You can see it on the big screen. I got, I did it.
Why is there so much? Just?
I'll look, Branson.
Okay.
It's lots of little pieces that add up. Um, part of it is, this is ice date and fillings, and if I ask them to fix something, they'll fix it, and they fix it on a fairly good timeline. Uh, sometimes people like, some other people I've worked with, it just sits in their lap for a while. But, so that's why I like this company.
Money well spent.
Big, some bigger things. Um, so they, they've got it actually fairly detailed in there, so like, the first line item is, the backup camera is intermittently not working. And since there's no rear windows on that bus, and it's super long, I'd rather that works.
Yeah.
Um, then, other parts, we haven't actually really put that much internal money into this bus. The only annoying thing is it's all general fund money, because it's an activity bus. Um, but the, the TV screens inside quit working two months ago. I messed with some things, but I don't know what's actually wrong with them, so that's on there. Um, looks like they have, they found a few parts that they wanted to fix. Um, one of them being the head unit, that's one of the larger ones, and then one of the TVs is out. Um, second page, the P A system isn't working, the driver's side P A system is just static, um, when it's not on. So they've taken to taking it on all the time, to make it not do that.
Oh, that's funny.
So, just, I'd like that fixed. Um, second one on the second page is the batteries. So when they built this bus, they, it came as a Freightliner truck, so it's the cab and then the frame. And then they put the, the actual bus body part over the top of it, and when they did that, they didn't give you any access to the batteries. So that's why the batteries are fairly expensive to replace, is because they've got to go from underneath and somehow unbolt it to get to the batteries. And we haven't had to mess with them, but this is two thousand, was it eighteen when we got it? So batteries are due for replacing. And, so, that's just, uh, you know. Um, and then the last one on there is that it seemed like the bus was sitting sideways when it's on a level ground. So, they were looking at that and wanted to add in a spacer block on one side of these outlets. And then, when I had it, you know, the inspector did it earlier this year, that inspection noted that there was a, a code that went off on my air brake system. And he said, it's not a thing you need to fix right away, but it should get looked at, and so that's also on there, so. We were told that there's a problem, please clear, clear the code or tell us that we're fucking, you know, or what it is. So, this is their quote of, um, please, please tell us that we can, that we can proceed and fix all these things. And they're usual, they're, usually they charge, basically what that is, the emails that it could be up to fifteen percent higher. And then, unless they find something more expensive. So in the past, um, I've had something where, um, one of the older buses, it was like, okay, it gives us a good line when I'm going at speed. They're like, okay, that's something. And then they dug in and said, okay, well, this, this thing's out, and then they dug in further and said, oh, we need a whole new part here. And so then it was a revised quote of that. But, yeah. Uh, summertime is when I try to do all the major things, yeah, and then I would err on, get the main, get the big things done in the summer, even if it's, it's a little more expensive, in the hope that we don't have to do anything during the rest of the school year. So.
Thank you, Branson. Is there any discussion? First, any of, uh, consent agenda, or in regards to the minutes, do those seem to be correct?
I don't think so, I think it's, because you guys already made, well, it's not editing the.
Yeah.
The information.
Is there any public comment? Public comment? So motion, move to approve the consent agenda as presented. I second, Sam made the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, the second motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Sam made the motion to approve consent agenda as presented, the second motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those close, same sign. Motion carries. We'll, at this time, close the meeting for executive session. And then, what did we decide as far as, we have to hang up on your mic?